I think everybody's here. We want to get started with the right away with the student recognitions. And I think that would, Mr. Fitzhugh, are you going to lead the way?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're going to begin with the May recognitions of 2018. From Brant Elementary, Rajah Hari.
Is she here?
There she is. This way. How are you? Excited? Alright. Rajah thrives academically and is always willing to accept the challenge. Her analytical skills, thoughtful responses show through in her work. She continues to show leadership skills, taking initiative, and consistently practices the Brant kindness pledge throughout the day. A do quote, "You are a true leader. You are always on the ready to provide guidance and support to all who need it. I am always impressed when I visit your class with how focused you are. She loves to tell me exactly what she's learning and where she is in her process. I am so proud of how she truly embodies the Brant bear spirit." This message comes from Mr. Rodriguez Gomez, your building principal. Student achievements, "I'm really proud about learning new things this year. I'm ready for second grade." Rajah is always willing to help a friend. She displays strong leadership skills by helping a friend with directions or solving a problem. She is always giving her personal best and is also a very thoughtful friend. Interview, what do you want to be when you grow up?
A veterinarian.
A veterinarian. And she loves animals and wants to take care of them. In school, she states that she loves reading because she learns new reading strategies. You also love gym because you get to learn, I'm sorry, you get to learn new sports. Your favorite food is pizza, and the best part of the pizza is the cheese. On the weekend, you love to go to swim class with your brother and your sister. And your personal quote, "Always try your personal best." At this time, let's give Rajah a huge round of applause on a job well done. Thank you. Congratulations. The Collabro Student of the Month, May 2018, Lilo Fang. How are you? Great seeing you again this week. Mrs. Zayas quotes, "Lilo has been a collabro since kindergarten. She enjoys drawing, sketching, and having fun with her friends. In the future, you want to become a writer or an illustrator. Lilo loves drawing comic books and creating different characters." Student quote, "Happiness can be found even in the darkest times if only one remembers to turn on the light." Your principal, Dr. Vespiani, states, "Lilo is a driven student, focused, creative, and humble. She has been a positive influence within our school community. I can say with certainty that Lilo is destined to have an even greater impact within our society. We will undoubtedly hear of great things that she accomplishes throughout her life. Lilo is an exceptional student who is always striving to do better. She's an amazing role model for her class and for the collabro community. She is considerate, trustworthy, thoughtful, and always willing to help anyone when needed. If Lilo puts her mind to something, I have no doubt she will succeed at it." At this time, let's give Lilo a huge round of applause on a job well done. Congratulations. Great job. Keep up the great work. The Connor's Elementary School Student of the Month, May 2018, Victor Scott. Nominated by Ms. Ayers, Victor has developed so much in the short time of year that he's been in my class. He has joined our class in late January, early February of this school year. Although switch was different for him in no time, he acclimated himself to our second grade classroom routines and activities like a champ. Even when he thought certain tasks may have been challenging, he continued to set weekly goals to try harder and push through, which is a great quality about him. Victor exhibits a love for learning new things, especially during mathematics. He displays an appreciation for mathematical concepts, whether we are adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing, or even counting money. He voluntarily sits front and center so that he is able to participate and remain actively engaged in all subject areas. Another great quality about Victor is how concerned he is with his peers. He never wants to see them upset. If he notices something out of the ordinary, he will immediately inform an adult or try to fix it himself. At this point of the school year, Mrs. Ayers can say with confidence that Victor demonstrates multiple qualities that exhibit a model student of the month, and he is a great addition to the Connor's school community. Dr. Pollens is extremely proud of Victor and happy to have him as a part of the Connor's community. He always greets Dr. Pollens with a big smile and a wave. Victor has overcome many obstacles, and Dr. Pollens thinks of the following quote by Michael Jordan, which he thinks of you. "Obstacles don't have to stop you. If you run into a wall, don't turn around and give up. Figure out how to climb it, get through it, or work around it. We are so very proud of Victor and his ability to be successful here at Connor's Elementary." Your favorite quote, "I feel great about Connor's." And your favorite activities, your hobby, playing in the park. What do you like to play in the park?
Tag.
Tag? Okay, I gotta check that out. Subject, mathematics, my favorite. Sports, football, and your future career will be a police officer. At this time, let's give Victor a huge round of applause on a job well done. The Wallace School Student of the Month, May 2018, Reese Roy. Nice to meet you. Are you excited? We're going to talk about you for like two minutes, okay? The Wallace School Student of the Month for May 2018 is Reese Roy, a kindergarten student in Mrs. Kabinski's class. Your teacher stated, "Reese is a pleasure to have in class. She's extremely kind, respectful towards both her teachers and classmates. Reese always tries her best and works hard to learn new things." According to Principal Shannon, Reese has a bright smile and is a very dedicated student. Her classmates and teachers certainly benefit from her positive attitude. This year, Reese was awarded the honor of being classroom peace foul as a result of her kindness and respect towards others. Mrs. Kabinski went on to say, "Reese is an asset to our school and student body because she is a wonderful role model for other students. Any teacher would be lucky to have Reese in their class." In her spare time, Reese enjoys participating in gymnastics and plays a variety of sports for the inner athletic program. She also likes to read, and she plays both guitar and drums. Reese would like to be a gymnast when she grows up. In Reese's words, "I am happy at Wallace because I like my teachers. I feel happy and proud to be Student of the Month for Wallace School." At this time, we're going to give big congratulations to Miss Reese Roy, the Wallace School Student of the Month for May 2018. Keep up the great work, okay? The Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for May 2018, Autumn Kangley. Hi, Autumn.
Hi.
Someone's been treating you well for one day?
Yeah.
Okay. The Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month is Autumn Kangley. She is nominated by her physical education teacher, Mr. Ponse. You were nominated because of your academic achievement, outstanding attitude, cooperation, empathy towards others, and leadership. Autumn has demonstrated leadership and outstanding attitude in the classroom and throughout the building. She comes to class prepared and always lends a helping hand to her peers. She always completes her homework and participates in class. Autumn's present academic achievement this year has been her ability to guide her destiny towards academic success through demonstrating the Taigo pride of perseverance, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence, but most importantly, self-discipline. Your principal, Dr. Davis, used the following quote to describe you. "Respect yourself, respect, I'm sorry, respect your efforts, respect yourself. Self-respect leads to self-discipline. When you have both firmly under your belt, that's real power." Autumn is an asset to the Hoboken Middle School community because she demonstrates an outstanding positive attitude while in school. She is kind, respectful, caring, and is a joy to have in class. Autumn is an asset to the Hoboken Middle School student body because she shows empathy towards her peers and obtains leadership skills to help motivate others. Now, your personal hobbies include playing softball, shopping, spending time with your family. Your favorite subject areas are science and English language arts. Your sports interests are softball and volleyball. Which one is your favorite?
Softball.
Softball? Alright. Your college choice is Rutgers University. I'm alumni. Your future career aspiration is to be a professional softball player. When asked about the honor of receiving the recognition, you stated, "Thank you for nominating me for Student of the Month and recognizing my outstanding achievements. Hoboken Middle School is so very proud of your accomplishments because you exhibit the true essence of middle school pride." You ready for it? Perseverance, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. Congratulations, Autumn, on a job well done. The Hoboken High School Student of the Month for May 2018, Daniel Burrell. Daniel unfortunately cannot be with us this evening, and if he's able to come in July, we'll read his narrative in July. Without any further ado, we have our June 2018 recipients. Our Brant recipient for June 2018, Samuel Baltikov. Mom is coming in the honors, so let's give Mom a round of applause this evening as well. Nominated by Mr. Preppadudo, Samuel's work in all areas of his learning has been outstanding. Samuel comes to school every day with a smile on his face and is ready to learn. His positive and open attitude has helped him build his knowledge and investigate new ideas. He listens well and eagerly shares his thoughts in class discussions. He is kind, compassionate, I'm sorry, a kind and compassionate student who is always willing to help another. A do quote, "As his principal, I am impressed by his quiet resolve. He takes his time and gathers information about taking action. This is such a mature characteristic to have at this young age. He is helpful and kind, but above all else, he's a friend to all in need. I am so very proud of him and all the difficult work that he has tackled on here at Brant this school year." This comes from Principal Rodriguez Gomez. Student achievements, speaking in Bulgarian at the practically the way distinguished school awards ceremony. What makes a student an asset, his positive attitude towards his learning and his peers. In his interview, he states, "His favorite class is science because he likes to do Scratch Junior. His favorite food is cheeseburgers. His favorite memory, when I made my Mother's Day gift because I love my mom. When I grow up, I want to be a soldier because they save lives." Student quote, "I like Brant because it is fun, and I like my teacher because she helps me learn even when I don't think I can." At this time, we will give Samuel a huge round of applause on a job well done. You're so very welcome. The Collabro Student of the Month, Grade 4 student, Mia Basilow.
She's on vacation. She'll be here next month.
Okay, so we'll do Mia's next month. Our Connor's recipient for June 2018, Jalen Figueroa. Ms. Sheridan nominated Jalen as Student of the Month because since her start in Mrs. Sheridan's first grade class, Jalen has enjoyed making new friends, sharing her ideas, and participating throughout the day. Jalen loves earning dojo points. Every marking period, Jalen's grades have improved. She continues to impress Mrs. Sheridan with her wonderful mathematics achievements. Jalen enjoys helping her other peers and working collaboratively in small groups. Jalen is part of the Boys and Girls Club and enjoys spending time with her older brother, Jose. One of Jalen's favorite hobbies is drawing. I like to draw. I'm not pretty good, but I like to draw. Jalen likes to play softball and soccer and wants to be on a baseball team. When asked what Jalen wants to be when she grows up, Jalen stated, "A teacher, just like Mrs. Sheridan." Dr. Pollens feels that Jalen has great potential in working together with her peers in a positive way. Jalen enjoys making learning fun by working together with her peers and sharing her ideas with others. When Dr. Pollens thinks of a quote, she thinks of the following quote to describe you. "Be kind whenever possible. It is always possible." Jalen, on a daily basis, shows that kindness is always possible. When asked what Jalen loves about Connor's School, Jalen stated, "I love Connor's because I love learning. One of my goals when I grow up is to help people learn." At this time, let's give Jalen a huge round of applause on a job well done. Our Wallace Student of the Month for June 2018, Olivia Davis. Olivia is not with us this evening. We will honor her in July 2018. Our Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month, Tiana Dale. Again, Tiana's not here. Again, we will honor her in July 2018. Our Hoboken High School Student of the Month for June 2018, Angel Quionis.
Angel's actually in Boston right now at the Future Medical Leaders Conference, so he'll be coming also in July for the award.
Thank you so very much this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzhugh. And congratulations to all the students. We're just going to take a quick five-minute break, give families a chance to leave. No sense to sit around for the rest of the meeting. There's a lot of business to take care of. But again, congratulations to the Students of the Month and their families. I'm going to call the meeting to order now. Sorry for the delay. Mr. Moffett, you want to read the statement of compliance?
Yes, sir. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on June 22, 2018, and June 24, 2018. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and Fios channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you, and please rise for the salute to the flag.
Mr. Moffett, the roll call, please. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Kana?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Here.
We have a quorum. We just did Students of the Month. The first item on the agenda then would be Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I have a few items to report out on. The first is, this is the June Board of Education meeting in which the New Jersey Department of Education requires that the district report out on the self-assessment for determining HIB grades. Those grades are always generated in a self-assessment from the year prior, the data that's generated from the year prior. So the grades that I'm going to report out are from 2016, 2017. They are calculated on a basis of a total score of 78. And with that being said, our Brant School has an assessment score of 73 out of 78. The Collabro School, 77 out of 78. The Connor School, 73 out of 78. Wallace School, 76 out of 78. The Middle School, 73 out of 78. And the High School, 72 out of 78. So we cannot report out on anything comparative regarding these HIB grades yet until they are collectively analyzed by the Department of Ed and posted. But right now, the individual school district self-assessment grades are required in every district to be posted on the website under a HIB tab. So you'll see them on the website. The other item that I would like to report out on this evening is as we enter into the summer months, we have a number of facilities projects that are going to be getting underway. Today, the SDA, School Development Authority, was here visiting and touring the Demarest School Building for the purpose of funding a project for large-scale renovations in this building. So they have pushed the project along. They toured every floor of the building from the basement all the way to the fourth floor, as well as the perimeter of the building as well. They are looking at everything from classroom improvements to masonry work on the outside to gym cafeteria and basement upgrades as well. So with that being said, they came, they toured everything, they took pictures. Architects that were selected by the Department of Education were here, and they also toured the building. We are currently working with an architect right now to complete the plans for the outdoor activity and fitness zone in the back of the middle school, in the back of Demarest School. We are also in the process of working with the architect to finalize the plans for the indoor living classroom, which will also be built here at the middle school. In addition, the same architect is doing some work on the outside of Collabro School, surveying the area to put in a kind of a soft, spongy play surface on the side of the Collabro School. Although small, it would provide an opportunity for the kids to be able to go outside at recess time for some small games or for some reading and relaxation time during recess. This week, I also wanted to let you know that our school resource officers are going through four days of what's called SOAR training. It includes everything from training on identifying suspicious packages to emergency contact information and training. It also includes first aid training as well. And then all of the security guards, along with many of our staff members, will be going through autism training tomorrow, as well at the Wallace School. Lastly, we have a number of projects that are going on this summer in all of our schools. We have the Extended School Year Program that's taking place at the Wallace Elementary School, and that will go on for the next four weeks. We also have a number of music and art programs that are taking place as well. At the high school, we have an instrumental music program which runs each year, along with a theater dramatic arts program. We are running an academic support and skills development program at the high school with a Red Wings readiness incoming freshman program that will take place at the end of August. And finally, new to our summer programs, we are introducing LEAP, which is a four-week program, starts the last day of July and runs through virtually all of August. It mirrors the school day from 8:15 to 3 o'clock, and embedded in that day is everything from some academics, challenge, enrichment, as well as fitness and wellness activities and a whole range of activities for kids. And then finally, we're also running a Red Wings Sports Clinic Series on those same four weeks in the evening at either the high school indoor or JFK Stadium outside. The sports clinics are for coed swimming. There's two weeks in the evening for coed swimming. There's also boys soccer and girls soccer, and there's girls basketball, boys basketball, and girls and boys volleyball as well. All of these programs have been tiered financially, so families that would have any kind of difficulty or challenge paying for the small tuition that's charged can attend and participate in the program at no cost. So in addition to these summer programs, I also wanted to announce that we have a number of summer reading initiatives that have been developed in conjunction with the local public library, as well as a math initiative. All of the core novel reading initiatives for this summer have been established, and multiple copies of the novels have been purchased and delivered to all of the schools for students to borrow copies of the books. We've also worked with the local public library to stock their shelves so that there's multiple copies. And for those individuals that would like to purchase the book, we've worked with Little City Big Books, and they have numerous copies as well on their shelves. Math is a little bit different. support in completing these assignments, or if they need computer access. There are hours that they can actually go to the math labs, and they piggyback on the back end of the LEAP programs. So, they take place later in the afternoon, which is good for families that are at camp that might not be attending our program, but for other programs. And we also have a bank of laptops and other computers that are available to all families, which we've lent a few out for summer programming already, along with internet jet packs, so that families can actually do the assignments at the leisure of their own time and in their homes if they so choose. So, with that being said, we kind of covered the gamut with both of those assignments. And lastly, at the July meeting, we will be reporting out all of the curriculum projects that we are working on this summer. There are a number of them that range from elementary curriculum to middle school to high school, and also some new courses that are being written at the high school level as well. So, summertime is the time that we develop all of the curriculum. We have teachers that are working with our administration, and those projects will be done prior to the end of the summer, so we can prepare our teachers for the upcoming school year. So, with that being said, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett, do you have anything?
I've got a couple items tonight. First, just want to let the Board beware that, or at least notify the Board of Action, tonight's action 10.37 and 10.38 are on. We discussed in the Finance Committee that we were waiting for the final proposal, and we were still negotiating with our carrier. So, what we added, we did get the actual price for the package that was uploaded earlier today, I just wanted to make you aware of that, it is on for vote tonight. I would like to mention that the total package for liability property and student insurance has decreased. It went from 321,940 down to 311,397, which is a reduction of 10,543, which is roughly about a 3.27% decline. So, that is again for consideration tonight, just wanted to point that out for you and the general public. Second thing, just wanted to give an update before coming tonight. I checked a couple news sources to see if the state budget has been approved. No luck with that, it's still being discussed. Apparently, there's light item vetoes being discussed, they still haven't to June 30. There has been some information in the general, I guess, news media of a potential reduction in our state aid after the statewide budget is approved. That number is roughly $230,000, which I'll be presenting a plan to handle that if it does come to fruition, most likely handle that similar to the way we did this year. Again, something similar happened with the last budget negotiations, where after we struck the budget, presented it to the public, voted on it, sent it to the county for certification, and get our tax levy all squared away, we were told of that reduction after all that. So, it's rather late in the process. It's unfortunate it comes to this, because districts like us, who would like to know if we are going to have the amount that was given to us at the beginning of the year is what we're gonna, or should say, beginning of the budget process, is gonna survive, that is, $230,000 that we have to make up either through reductions in our budget, through use of surplus, or potentially reductions in, like I said, programs. So, once again, the budget hasn't passed. Once it is, and I know the more details become available, and I know more about how to handle it, I'll share it with the Board and discuss it at a future Board meeting. With that said, I'll turn it back.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to committee reports, and first up would be the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Delara?
Sure. The Curriculum Committee met on June 19. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Evans, Ms. Klupfel, Dr. Johnson, and myself. The items discussed that generated some discussion were, as Dr. Johnson had just mentioned, some new programs, in particular, the Junior Achievement of New Jersey Partnership. And just a little bit about them, their mission is to inspire and prepare young people in grades K to 12 to succeed in a global economy through real-world relationships with business, government, and education partners that can help them develop the employability and financial literacy skills needed to succeed in the 21st century. This will be at no cost to our schools. It will enhance and correlate with the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards, such as social studies, math, and reading. It will enrich our students' learning through volunteer networks, and it will bring outside perspectives into the classrooms through positive role models. We also talked about the district's summer programs and kind of an enrollment update. Our theater and band camps are at capacity, and those are set to start next week. Our Extended School Year Program, which is our program for our special education students, started today, and that program is fully staffed with their special ed teachers and paraprofessionals. We also talked about the Red Wing Sports Clinics and how we will be opening that up, registration to the city soon. We also spoke about some planned trainings and events coming up. So, tomorrow, we will be having a training at Wallace School with POAC, which stands for Parents of Autistic Children. And really, the objective for this is to make our law enforcement officers and first response professionals aware of the conditions of autism and the characteristics commonly seen in those affected, and provide information to make sure that they know how to deal with those affected with autism and how to respond to those in field situations. We will also be going to an AMISAT training at Keene University, that's to go in July, and the Hispanic Culture Club will be having a block party on September 29. Just some curriculum updates. The COGAT, every child tested for the COGAT, grades first and up. So, those scores will be mailed out, have been mailed out on the last day of school, which was yesterday. And we also spoke about our middle school schedule, just some revamping on how our new schedule will look like for the 2018-2019 year. And then, our summer reading assignments are up on the district website, and as Dr. Johnson spoke, the theme of our summer assignments this year are empathy, diversity, fairness, and equity. And then also to just touch on curriculum and then the wellness portion of it, as you know, in our last meeting, I brought up a topic on Pomptonian, who is our current food service provider. So, we met with them, myself, Ms. Angley, Ms. Klupfel, Mr. Moffett, and Dr. Johnson were at the meeting, so we had a really good meeting. I was able to express my concerns on the current, you know, food items that we are serving our students, and how we can better, you know, just improve on what we're serving nutritionally, and also just bring some nutrition education into our classrooms as well. And they were very open to suggestions and ideas, and so we do have some upcoming events in September with Pomptonian. And we did speak about changing some of our menu items, and improving and adding some healthier, but just more nutritious options into our menu. So, I'm excited to report on that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities is next, and Ms. Kana, you're gonna be doing the report.
Correct. The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, June 20, at 1:00 p.m. In attendance were Mr. Callagie, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Klupfel, Ms. Angley, Ms. Delara, and myself. We have five items on the agenda under approvals of facilities requests. Redeemer, Hoboken Church, and City of Baptist Church have requested church services at Wallace and Hoboken High School, SOG Sports Coed Football League at JFK Stadium, City of Hoboken Summer Fund Program would like the use of the Hoboken High School pool. And lastly, a unique request, Adorable Goods has requested the filming of a BIC commercial at Wallace Elementary School. Some other items that were discussed, we met with the district SROs to discuss drop-off and pickup procedures at Wallace and ways to enhance safety. Any enhancements will be communicated once finalized. Summer projects, the new middle school living classroom next to Demarest will start construction sometime in early part of August. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance is, Ms. Angley?
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, June 19, at 7:30. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Klupfel, Mr. Madigan, Ms. Kieran, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for Board approval. The committee had a rather lengthy meeting discussing items in preparation of the upcoming school year, such as out-of-district placements, contracts for various items, including software imperative to our special education program, special service awards for three different vendors providing occupational physical therapy and/or speech services. We discussed professional services awards, including the environmental engineering and consulting services of record, legal services, and with both of these services, I'm pleased that in 1718, our actual expenses came in under what was initially projected, which is also reflected in the 1819 legal projection. We also discussed possible 1718 year-end transfers, and determined, in conjunction with district auditors, what the maximum maintenance and capital reserve accounts might look like. And lastly, we discussed the donations, and we would like to thank the Hoboken Soccer Patrons for their generous donations of girls' soccer jackets, fall preseason training, and fall season post-game video analysis. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And the Governance Committee, Governance and Personnel is, Ms. Evans?
The Governance and Personnel Committee met on June 19. That's the call, in attendance, Ms. Kana, Ms. Kana, and so on.
Excuse me, Ms. Evans?
Can you just hold one second?
How's that? Yes? Okay. Okay. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on June 19. In attendance... (noise) I'll stick with, go back. Okay. Okay. How about now? Okay. How about now? Ah, there I can tell. In attendance were myself, Ms. Kana, Ms. Soboloff, Mr. Klupfel, and Dr. Johnson. We reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for approval tonight. We do have one resignation, or retirement, rather, on the agenda. Mr. Bruno Acuna is retiring. He's been with the district for 13 years, so tonight, we'd like to thank him for his many years of service and wish him all the best in his retirement. As you'll see, there are many items under Governance and Personnel, and they really fall into three buckets, as is typical at this time of year. As the Superintendent mentioned, we have many summer programs and camps going on, and so we're approving agenda items for staff for those programs, for things like the Extended School Year, the LEAP Program, and more. We're also working to finish up and close things out for the school year that just ended yesterday, and also getting ready for the upcoming school year, so approving things like curriculum writing, child study team members, et cetera. And finally, we're also looking ahead and getting ready for the upcoming school year. So, you'll see that there are things like appointments on the agenda. As we've discussed, we have considerable enrollment growth coming in the fall, so we'll need some new teachers for that. And we discussed how that is not just classroom teachers, but it also increases our need for special teachers, so for things like gym, and music, and languages, and more. And also getting ready for the athletic season in the fall. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett, you indicated you had one more thing?
One more item I'd like to report out. I'll be handing this out to each Board member. This is a list of our contracts that we are required to provide at the end of the year. It's basically all the contracts that are in place for the 16, I'm sorry, the 1718 fiscal year that are expiring, and it's really a list that identifies vendor, approval date, and the type. It looks very similar to what we approve every month under the contract section, and again, it is a requirement, so I'll be passing this out to each Board member.
All right, thank you. (inaudible) Right, okay. Nothing needs to be pulled. I apologize, we've got a confusing agenda tonight, not confusing, but just complicated. I apologize, we're gonna have to have one, at least one, probably two executive sessions tonight, having to do with litigation and some personnel things, and we'll need to do one session, no, actually, we can do a consent agenda, and then vote on live items after executive session. So, the next order of business would be public comment on agenda items only. Is there anybody signed up for that?
(inaudible)
These are agenda items.
Yeah, I have two speakers listed, Courtney Wicks and Patricia Waiters.
Thank you. So, a public comment on agenda items only, and the first speaker is?
Is Courtney Wicks.
Hi, Courtney Wicks, 3611 Park Avenue, Union City. So, I have a couple agenda items here that I've got some questions about. First is 9.14, the approval of all teachers employed by Hoboken Board of Education to a pool of home instructors. This is obviously an issue I raised months ago about the quality of homeschooling. We're also, I think, contracting out to an outside vendor to monitor homeschooling. I think the larger question that I have is who's being sent out on homeschooling? How long are they being sent out for? Are these teachers who are, that we are approving, are they inside the district? Are they being provided by folks, by the vendor from outside the district? And how are we measuring success? The second agenda item is 9.31, approval of staff for summer curriculum writing. So, my only question is here is that we have a staff of teachers, and then we have some administrators, but we don't have any supervisors in language arts, and we don't have any curriculum supervisors in science or math. And I can tell you that it's very felt in the middle school, in the middle school experience, and I think the teachers would be better served, however you need to restructure the district, I know there's some rules with that, but the curriculum is really suffering as a result of not having, you know, supervisors who really know these subject areas really, really well. The last part is the 9.24, approval of staff for summer hours at Hoboken High School. We're paying seven people for credit recovery. The big issue is the lacking of accountability with this program, and that it's not necessarily jiving with ensuring that kids are college-ready. This is not just me giving an opinion, this is something, if you look up online, the Los Angeles Unified District is undergoing whether or not credit recovery is effective in preparing students for college and beyond. Chicago's saying the same thing, and New York is also saying the same thing. I don't know why we can't just have, why we can't just expect that our kids graduate at the number, at the percentage that they're graduating at and still be college-ready. There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be the as a result of not having supervisors who really know these subject areas really, really well. The last part is the 9.24, approval of staff for summer hours at Hoboken High School. We're paying seven people for credit recovery. The big issue is the lacking of accountability with this program, and that it's not necessarily jiving with ensuring that kids are college-ready. This is not just me giving an opinion. This is something, if you look up online, the Los Angeles Unified District is undergoing whether or not credit recovery is effective in preparing students for college and beyond. Chicago's saying the same thing, and New York is also saying the same thing. I don't know why we can't just have... why we can't just expect that our kids graduate at the number, at the percentage that they're graduating at and still be college-ready. There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be this dichotomy between making sure that kids are graduating and whether or not kids are college-ready. So those are just my comments on the agenda items.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Patricia Waiters.
First, I want to say, school out. For everybody that's watching this, drive safely, please. The second page, page... I mean, page three. I spoke again about this public participation, about the... the big ugly black square about the public comments that was put on here before. I don't remember the council president explaining this to me, but if I could just mention again, I'm really uncomfortable with this. I mean, it's only my opinion, and I noticed you still kept it on there, so that's neither here or there. But if we look around, I mean, every time you turn the TV on, you see, and we had a lawsuit with the same language that I mentioned, Mr. Counseling here, Corporation Counsel, so I guess this young lady is sitting in his place. What I'm saying with this is, under the Civil Rights Act, we had an issue like this with the city where they stated you can't say a certain thing when one of the speakers was speaking on the public about the mayor's husband and was carried out. Well, anyway, we won the lawsuit. But with this being said right here about, like, if we get aggressive or use abusive language or whatever, and it links it to the Robert Rules of Order, this is two completely different things. And it sounds more like a gag order, like to silence somebody, and I really feel so uncomfortable with this. I asked them to revisit this. I asked the lawyer too, could they revisit this? Because every single day, you seeing this, and people should not be told what they have to do and say, and we can't address this board, where we have some serious issues with board members saying some very derogatory things, and we want to question that board member. We never get answers when we stand here. I mean, things that's serious, racially motivated, things that's, like, real insensitive, and we cannot stand up here and question that, and we feel a person shouldn't even be serving on this board. That is our right at the public portion to bring those matters up. So just if you get a chance, please, today, could you revisit it? It's the big, black, ugly square they have in every agenda. So I don't want to waste my five minutes with that. Moving on. Mr. Mark Matone on page five. I just only had, like, two brief seconds to speak to him because I was running late and I came to review the agenda. I did have a few parents that I helped in Wallace with their special need children, and I'm seeing this on here tonight. I did meet the interim... thank you, Mr. Matone, for explaining to me, the interim director, but he explained to me that, you know, this is him, and he's gonna be appointed to that position. I just want to say that he has been doing a great job. I mean, if you can handle this one parent that's been coming to me, my hat's go off to him. But he's been doing a great job, and this appointment here, I'm just saying that, you know, just giving him a good recommendation for his skills, because I've been in meetings with him and parents that come to me with issues with their special needs. And last... all right, these academies on here, is these Chapel Hill Academy, Bergen County? This is, like, just bus stops? Do we have students that's going to these schools here? And I want to know about the buses, like, being transported. Do they transport our kids to Bergen County, Westbridge Academies? The list goes on. Essex County? You can answer me, Mr. President Leader. At the last page, the next to the last page, is a bunch of schools, and then it says students. So I see a bunch of names. I know they're underage, so you can't give their full name. It says tuition contracts. What page is it? The page is stating, I can't see. But through this school, I mean, are we responsible to pay these fees for these kids that's being bused to these schools? I mean, do we have options? Like, our kid could go to another school, and this district pay for it? Yes, they can? So if I put Ralph in another school, he will be bused there and back?
Should I... Okay, so the question you're actually asking has to do with certified New Jersey special education schools. So there are some students in every school district that are educated in an out-of-district placement, and they're transported from their resident district to the out-of-district certified special education...
Just an ordinary student can go. They won't qualify.
Correct. That's correct. It's done through the IEP process, and once that happens, the resident district is required to cover the educational and transportation costs.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
That was the last speaker.
That was the last speaker, thank you.
Here's the statement.
We can do the consent agenda. Yeah. So we're gonna go into executive session in a minute, but first, we can do a vote on the consent agenda and do live items later on. So I'll need a motion on that.
Motion. Second.
Who, the second was Irene? Ms. Sobolov?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
10.05 abstain. 10.26B abstain. Everything else, yes, on that item. And 10.32 abstain. Everything else, yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Takirian?
Yes.
And Mr. Clubfeld?
I must abstain on 10.04, and then vote yes on everything else.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. At this time, we will go into executive session to discuss items related to personnel. No action will be taken as a result of that. We will return and take comments on non-agenda items before returning into executive session to discuss items related to contract negotiations and litigation. Action may be taken after that. So we're gonna go into a brief executive session, come back for public comments, then go back into executive session for an update on some litigation. So motion for executive session for the purpose of personnel?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. I move that we come back into public session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're back. The next item on the agenda would be public comments on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, we have nine speakers. There may be a group, but the first speaker is Elizabeth Adams.
I'll be keeping a clock. John, run back here. Good evening. Tonight, I am speaking to express outrage over the most recent episode of hate speech that was perpetrated by one of this board's members. This particular time, the incident was captured on tape, so consequently, there is no wiggle room this time to spin the story, that is to say, to proceed to take it, turn it, twist and twist it to suit anyone's particular agenda. Only not quite three months ago, this country commemorated the 50th anniversary of the murder of one of the greatest human beings ever, of any race, creed, color, or culture, to grace this planet, namely, Dr. Martin Luther King. The individual of whom I am referring, in all probability, is either too young to remember that day, or perhaps had not yet even been born. However, I can assure you that I was not only alive at that time, but that I remember that time in our country's history all too well. I was literally a child of the 60s. The many incidents that took place at that time, not the least being that particular tragedy, have indelibly made their mark on my heart. When I was a very young child, I used to think, oh, boy, the future! Then, some years later, I would think, oh, yeah, the future. Now, I realize that whether for good, bad, evil, awful, ugly, or indifferent, the future has pretty much arrived. And overall, at least at this point, it is most definitely not a very attractive one. Every now and again, I am necessarily constrained to have to pinch myself in order to remind myself that we are already nearly two entire decades into the 21st century. Would not one surely think, after all of this time, that we, as a people, would have significantly progressed or spiritually evolved since that time? But alas, with incidents of this nature continuing to take place, the answer is no. To borrow a song title, "Children Will Listen." And when they do listen, as they inevitably will at some point, what do you suppose that they will take away? That is to say, actually learn from this latest disgusting display of hate? The only truly appropriate response to this atrocity is for this individual to resign their position on this board immediately. A refusal to do so should therefore prompt the only appropriate response by this board, which should be to terminate that individual's position on the board effective immediately. To do anything else otherwise would be tantamount to complicity with that individual's actions. And yes, words, particularly words as vile and hateful as what this individual has spewed, are indeed actions. In any event, it is a genuine mystery, aside from this individual's apparent facility for political schmoozing and slander, as to their actual qualifications to even hold a position on the Board of Education to begin with, as the individual is not only a high school dropout, but also does not even currently have any children in the Hoboken school system, and therefore, no genuine skin in the game. The remark to which I have been referring is as follows: Who cares what the N-words in the projects think? I am cleaning it up here, however, I can assure you that the complete word, in all of its ugliness, was indeed utilized. The perpetrator of this remark is someone who is certainly no stranger to past controversies, as I'm sure you will recall another incident in which the individual utilized a slur in an attempt to personally disparage a member of the city council, as well as a member of the general public, specifically a parent who at one time did have children enrolled in the Hoboken public school system. However, the choice was made to withdraw them, enrolling them instead in a private school. It is way past time for the individual of whom I have been speaking, namely, Ms. Sobolov, to take responsibility for her actions and be held accountable for them. It is also way past time to stop paying only lip service to various morals, ethics, values, standards, and ideals, and start, effectively, to put your money where your collective mouth is. As people who are supposedly responsible for the education and therefore well-being of our children, can you, in all honesty, do anything less? Thank you for your time.
The next speaker, I can't make out the handwriting. It is a Calabro parent, and I'm gonna...
My name is Eddie Rivera. I've been a Hoboken resident for 50 years. We Calabro parents are here for a certain individual, for a 10-year-old who has made death threats against our children, and nothing's been done. A 10-year-old who's been assaulted, who has bullied, who has stabbed one of our children, and nothing's been done. We've been trying since May 10th. Emails have been flying to the vice superintendent, superintendent, principal, teacher. I even got the school resource officer involved in this. Reports have been made to today's date, we're now June 26th. We're still waiting for action to be taken against a 10-year-old who has changed the dynamics of this classroom, has turned everything upside down, where the kids are in fear to go to school. Every time my phone rings and I see Calabro School on there, I'm wondering if my child is dead, because the death threat was made against three children. The child threatened to bring a gun to school and kill three kids. Nothing's been done. Do we have an answer as to what's gonna happen with this child? Because we're not up here wasting our time. Oh, yeah, yeah, and she's only been, she's only been in this school, I want to say, four weeks, six weeks if that tops, that she was transferred from another school.
You need to... this part, you can speak in generalities, but what you're actually doing, we will not discuss a student, nor whether 10-year-old, 15-year-old, 18-year-old, no matter what it be, at a public meeting. That cannot happen, and it...
Oh, so we need answers?
And it won't. You said that wasn't true, which means that you actually just discussed the fact that you responded to something you said, and you said it wasn't true. So you did discuss it. At a public meeting...
At a public board meeting, we will not be discussing a child publicly.
The board protects the confidentiality of all students in the district and won't be discussing any student matters at a public meeting.
So is you guys at the board, is anyone aware of what's been happening? Are all you board members aware of these death threats in the school? Any of you aware of this?
We're going to, and I'm going to ask you one more time, be very cautious of the allegations that you're making publicly.
Oh, it's not an allegation, it's the truth.
An allegation...
And it's in black and white, and you have a copy of it.
An allegation is something that has been investigated and founded.
Okay.
Okay? So what I'm going to say is, be very careful in terms of what you're saying at a public meeting and the violation of another person's privacy. Be very, very careful. That's all I'm saying. I attempted, I will continue to dialogue with all of you regarding your situations. I have no problem. I don't want you not to feel like you have the right to speak in any way, shape, or form. All I'm asking you is to please be cognizant of the fact that we are dealing with a child and a child's privacy. That's it.
And that's understandable, because we're aware of that, and we're not throwing her name, or so on and so forth. We're not putting names up. We were aware of that.
We're talking about a very small school, so that's the only, that's the only issue. We hear, we hear you.
Dr. Johnson? I'll take it over, because I feel calm. One second. You have to say your name right now? Sure. My name is Joseph Gallo. I've been a Hoboken resident for 30 years. We urge you, as parents of Calabro, to please take our correspondence, our emails, the eyewitness reports that we're getting from our children, to take this in a very serious manner, because in a time of a scary no-tolerance time in our, in our world, we do not want one of our children to be the next one who's in the news. We feel that strongly about what is going on that we are here today. We have no idea what's going on from your perspective, really. We don't know what's, how it's being dealt with, but we know that it's serious enough from our perspective that it brought us here today. My fear is, knowing nothing, and knowing just a little bit of past history that has brought us to this, is that it's being dealt with like an old-school Catholic school, where the problem is just shifted to another parish, and then hopefully, it'll either go away, or it just, it will repeat itself until it's regrettably too late. So please, we urge you to please take this seriously. We are here with deep concern, because it's our children. And if it was your child, and I could say for me personally, that my daughter was stabbed in the hand with a pencil, and if it was anyone else's child, they would be standing here as well. So please, we urge you to look at this situation, do everything in your power to defuse this situation, and to do something that does not continue to put our children at Calabro into the jeopardy that we feel that they are in at this current time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, Melody Bates. I've been a resident for over 30 years. So I'm concerned, because this happened in Calabro when my daughter was in fifth grade with another student. And it didn't, there was no, nothing done until recently, and the kid was expelled two years later. later. So I'm just afraid that it's gonna be the same thing again. My son was threatened to be bashed in the face with a bat and killed as well. And I just feel like it's being on deaf ears, like no one's listening, when it's my son that's being threatened. And it's not like, oh, I'm gonna push you in the playground, it's I'm gonna kill you. And that's wrong. So I just need answers to what's going to happen, because I don't want to have to pull my son out of the school, because he's been in there since kindergarten, and he's going into 4th grade. I don't want to have to pull him out. And I just need answers, because I feel as though no one is listening. We send emails, and it's just like, we get a response back two, three days later, and it's just like, okay, well, we're doing the best that we can. And I just feel like no one's listening. So what's the next step?
Thank you.
I mean, my name is Candy Warehan. I've lived in Hoboken for over 30 years as well. I actually had a meeting with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the principal of Calabro. And basically, I felt as though it was being pushed aside, and my concerns were unimportant. And again, like, he said, you know, these are our children, and this is something that needs to be taken serious. My daughter, who is really tiny, was popped on the head by this student. And I told the superintendent that I would pull my daughter and put her in another school if this is not resolved, because I don't want to put her through another year of this, where she comes home shocked at what's going on at school. She's not used to this. None of the students are used to what has been happening. The talking back, and, you know, the disrespect to teachers and to other students. So, you know, I feel as though, after that meeting, I explained to them that should something happen to my child, it's gonna be on them, because if they don't do something about this other student. And I just never got a reply. So to me, that tells me that we're not being taken serious, it's not important. I didn't hear from one other person. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Titiana Sopranova. I'm mom of one of the children from the class. And I was a resident long in this area. I moved like two and a half, two years ago. I want to show you the difference. My child was transferred pretty much same time the year before, before this student was transferred. And we had absolutely no issues in the class. It was absolutely quiet, he's very peaceful, very respectful. No any problems occurred. The same students, same class. So I cannot tell that this is something wrong in the class was going on. Not at all. It's all about the student that affects the whole class. The thing is that we are here so our children can grow and blossom. We don't want it to happen different way. So I really, really would love you to take action about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Is Eric here? Are there any other speakers? Yes, I have Courtney Wicks. There's three, she's one of the last three.
Courtney Wicks, 3611 Park Avenue, Union City. Okay, first I want to just say happy Pride Month to all the families and children representing the LGBTQ community, and happy Juneteenth Day, the Independence Day for African-Americans. June 19th, slavery was officially abolished in Texas, the last state to comply with Abraham Lincoln's executive order. We have struggled and accomplished so much as a people, but still, we have a long way to go to realize true equity, true equality, and the right to pursue life, love, and liberty in this country. On May 17th, I, along with eight other plaintiffs of many creeds, races, and ethnicities and religions, and approximately 20 civil rights organizations that include the State Conference and ACP, New Jersey Institute for Social Justice, the Latino Action Network, and many others, joined the New Jersey Coalition of Diverse and Inclusive Schools to sue the state of New Jersey on May 17th, the anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education, to desegregate New Jersey schools. All the plaintiffs brought our district experiences to this lawsuit, in the hopes that the state will step up to compel districts like Hoboken to desegregate its schools and dismantle discrimination in its many forms in public schools. I was up here a year ago, asking the district to create a diversity inclusion task force or committee to examine issues of discrimination, provide a safe space for historically marginalized parents to have a voice, and to work collaboratively to provide recommendations and solutions to these issues. I know by the mere fact that the district still doesn't have a committee, and the district still doesn't have a real desegregation plan that I am aware of, that you don't take what I'm saying seriously, even though there is mounds of data that supports my claims, or at least raises serious questions. But not addressing these issues does affect your child. The American Teachers Federation wrote 64-some years ago, when the decision of Brown versus Board of Education came down, a letter condemning school segregation. The teachers' organization stated that the segregation was immoral, and that it impacted both black and white children. It said that the impacts on white children were far more subtle. In a spiritual sense, it corrupted one child while corroding the other. And I can see that play out in the district very clearly. I know we've sort of, we've, you know, denied that there's racial tracking and some of these other things, but along with the immoral aspect of not dealing with discrimination issues in the district on a systemic level, there is also a financial cost. You can't fund two districts, and right now, we are funding two districts in one. And I can tell you that from a parent who has a child on a track, that is the honors track, that is considered the highest level in the district, it is at least one track below what other public school districts are offering. She took Algebra I as an example this year, on a double accelerated track in any other public school district, that track, she would have taken Algebra I her 7th grade year. This would have at least set her up to take both AP Calculus her junior year, AB, and AP Calculus BC her senior year. The other thing is, in terms of the supplemental work that we had to spend as parents, not because she was a struggling student, but because we realized from across the state and talking to other students that went to other public schools that had these double accelerated tracks, that she was behind in vocabulary. In the middle school, there's very little vocabulary development, whereas other schools are doing it. There's also some building blocks on grammar. And then the rigor in terms of the reading is very slow. They read, again, four books this year, whereas in any other district, a track on that level, they would be reading at least seven books, plus getting grammar work, plus getting vocabulary work. I don't, when you have two districts in one, you can't, right now, we wouldn't even be able to add the extra track if we wanted to, because we have three tracks below what's considered the standard college-ready track. We have kids that aren't prepared to hit, that aren't prepared to hit 9th grade to take Algebra I, and therefore, they are behind. And that's why you're seeing the struggling of students in terms of our scores, and that is why we are heavily relying on credit recovery to help kids get over the hump and graduate, even though they may not be college-ready. I just want to just wrap up and just say that you think it doesn't impact your child, but it will, because at some point, your child will be behind, because we can't financially fund a more rigorous, a more grander school district under the current structure that we have and what we are providing kids. So the best thing to do is to raise everyone up, consolidate some of these classes, and make this the best damn district the state's ever seen.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Waiters' name.
Pat Waiters. Oh, and just for the record, I don't want to beat on TV for an individual that said clowns want to be on TV. I've been very busy the last three weeks, and I just was trying to talk to the families out there. Pat Waiters, 1230 Park Avenue. Dr. Johnson, I don't want to lose focus, real quick. I want to thank you too about the program that you're bringing for the summer. So many of our kids needed that and look forward to it. I didn't find out until today, if you read your texts, and I texted somebody else, Ms. Pick, because I don't know the particulars about it, so please, can I get five minutes after the meeting with that? Because I've been really out of the loop, and I only got the in part of the situation. I talked to a few parents out there. I'm not putting this on the record, because it is litigation, and I hope they're giving you an opportunity to investigate, because these allegations is very serious, very, very serious. And just like that child has to be protected, and that's the law for confidentiality reasons for any public school district, it also is a law for the kids that's in there too. They gotta go, in six weeks to eight weeks, school gonna start again, so I'm seeing why the parent is a little upset and a little antsy, because they want to make sure this matter is not ongoing. All right? So like I told you all before, when people act out of emotions, but when it's your kid, I know I have small kids, when it's your child, it's like, you know, the same protection that you got, you said about the other individual, that's how they feel too. Those are their children. You don't want nobody's child hurt. Those allegations of threats and stuff is real serious. We turn the TV on, and all of you seen two weeks ago, the 12-year-old that took her life. Bullying went to a whole new level, and I'm just begging you, and I know you've been trying everything, bringing this bullying intimidation that you put on the agenda, and you keep our parents and, you know, people aware of what's going on, that helped a lot too. So they can know we keeping track of it. But I'm gonna ask again, why don't we get more counseling? We really need counseling. I'm not saying the resource office is not doing a good job. I know I've done it in the past at the juvenile detention center, and it helps. We need to really counsel our kids and let them know, because when they leave school at 4 o'clock, they go home and they see it. It's every day and part of their life. So get counseling, anything I could do to help, I'll be of assistance, Dr. Johnson, you know that. I'll come to your office and talk to you, whatever we could do to rectify this. I try to see all both parties happy, because our kids got the right by law, I know that much of the law, to a duty-free education. Okay? So you can look around our school district and see, you don't hear complaints like this in Elysian, you don't hear complaints in Ola, you don't hear complaints in the K-12 charter school. And my kids attended those schools. Those schools are segregated, you don't hear nothing about bullying, you don't hear nothing about fighting. So some people got the opportunity to either put their kids in the segregated charter schools, or bust them out, and their kids is not even in the district. So this is when I get a little upset, because if you're gonna serve on this board, you're serving all the kids, especially the public school kids. So take me real serious when I say this one. President, okay? President, please, and I'm gonna talk to you too, Dr. Johnson, please work with me on this, especially if the parents give me permission, I'll do anything you tell me to do, with respect to seeing that the kids is in a safe, duty-free, safe, no fighting, no violent environment. That's the only thing I'm pushing for. I don't want to say nobody's business, I know the individual very well. I'm telling you, please take this one serious, and I'll definitely talk to you off the record pertaining to that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Last speaker is Namibia Donadio.
Hi, good evening, members of the board, and everyone here.
I need your name and municipality.
Yes, my name is Namibia Donadio Mejia, and I am a Hoboken resident.
Thank you.
I attended public school here throughout my entire life, and I'm very happy to invite Hoboken families to the Second Annual Art is Love and Action Summer Camp. I'm the director of the camp and co-founder of an organization that will be putting together an arts and social justice intensive program for two weeks, from August 6th through August 18th, for young people ages 12 years old through 16 years old. The program, the intention of the program is to work with young people to incorporate arts. We're gonna be exposing them to professionals in the arts of many different disciplines. And the workshops are intentional to be educational, and work through a social justice perspective, so that the young people learn not only that they have power in their voice, but to really learn how voice is also a tool for messaging, for campaigning, and for advocacy. We believe that while children are the future, they're also the present, and when they realize the ways that they can impact the present, it's something really beautiful and magical. And so I'd like to invite families over. We're gonna be putting up the registration link on www.artisloveandaction.com. The landing page will be up July 1st, and it'll be a Google form registration. There are spaces for 20 young people, it's the second year in the program, hopefully we'll expand in the future. Last year, 17 of those young people went to Hoboken Public Schools, and it was amazing. And yeah, please email me personally, namibia, N-A-M-I-B-I-A-D, at gmail dot com with any questions. Thank you.
Did you just have a fundraiser recently?
I did.
Was it, is it upcoming, or is it...
We just did a fundraiser on June 23rd. No, and it was really nice, a lot of community came out, and so we're looking to do some upcoming fundraisers to really make sure that this program is sustainable. The vision for this is for it to be an all-year program that can help young people really process the issues that are happening in their world through their own lens. And we're partnered with Hoboken Housing Authority once again, and this year, we're partnering with the public library, so also looking forward to any ideas of collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna go into executive session again, for the purpose of litigation and to discuss the contracts. Motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay. Everybody ready? Do you have a motion to come back in?
Motion, second.
So a motion and a second to come back into public session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose, okay. Mr. Moffett, you have two live items we're gonna vote on tonight.
Right, I have two live items. The first live item would be the approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Hoboken School Employees Association and the Hoboken Board of Education. Anyone can take a vote on that. Can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
So Sheila, and motion. And I can call roll?
Please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Madden again?
We're voting on both here.
No, this will be just the first live item, which is the settlement, I'm sorry, the settlement is second, this is the agreement of the, right, the memorandum of...
Yes, for the union.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Takirian?
Yes.
And Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Okay, the second live item is to approve settlement for case number H U D L 4621-17. Have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second.
So Sharon, Angley, and the second was... John. I'll call roll. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans? Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Matigan?
No.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Takirian?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Okay, both motions carry.
Both pass, thank you. Any other business before the board tonight? Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a brief comment in response to some of the comments that were made earlier. This Board of Education is the only democratically-elected Board of Education in Hoboken, a fact that I am incredibly proud of. We all put ourselves out there for voluntary community service, and people can come to the podium and discuss anything they want. They could disagree with me on my vote, or, you know, we can have a discussion on opinions. And I appreciate the people when they come up to the podium, because I know it's hard, I've been on that side of the podium. What I do believe is unfair is for people to come to this forum to destroy somebody's reputation for political gain with completely false statements. Very serious charges were made, and I invite anybody who has the belief that those charges are true to file a suit. I would actually welcome the opportunity to defend myself, formally defend myself, than have to sit here quiet month after month at this meeting and sit quiet while being attacked, unsubstantiated and easily disproven attacks. If anybody has any question, my number, my personal, even my personal phone numbers and emails have always been readily available, so I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?